We start on time because we're on live television. And we're going to end on time, and I'll get to that in a moment. Try to get everybody in if we can. All right, I was just gonna go. All right, so what we'd like to do, before we do any of the other introductions, let me first of all just introduce myself. My name is Rick Blangiardi. If you don't know already, I have the privilege of being the mayor. We're gonna start off with a poulet. We're gonna bring up Moki Labra. Moki, I want you to come up. We start all of our town hall meetings with a poulet. And Moki is really a very special person. For the last two years, he's won our Mayor's Lake Contest. Very, very talented man, very spiritual, very creative. And we're honored to have you here tonight, Moki. It's up to you. Thank you, Moki. Thank you very, very much. All right, great. So we're in the Historic Haleiwa Gym tonight. And I hope that we're gonna make some history together here tonight as well. I wanted to introduce a couple of special guests. I know Councilman Matt Wires in the room. Matt, over here. I was looking for Sean Quinnlin, but I don't see Sean. I don't think he's here yet. If he comes, I'll introduce him later. Also Brenton Awa. Brenton's not here. Supposed to be here, that's okay. All right, we have a youth commissioner, though. One of the things that we stood up early on. Dominique Benipashio. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you. Appreciate that. So what I'd like to do is establish some ground rules. But first, I want you to meet our team. And the reason why I want you to meet our team is I'm very proud of these men and women. And this is our second town hall of the year. Can you hear me okay? I'm getting... Can you... Too close to this? Okay. And we do this purposely. And they come out. And this is the expertise, this is the leadership team that runs the city. And what we want to do is make them directly accessible to you. So after we go through the introduction a little bit, I'll tell you, we don't have a lot of rules, but we have got a couple of ground rules on why we're here and what we hope to be able to do. And the whole purpose of bringing everybody out here is to answer as many questions as we possibly can, put you in direct contact with the people who would be responsible, not only in the moment maybe you answer a question, but to establish that contact for any follow-up necessary. And we think that that's the best way that we can best serve you. So before we begin the introduction of the team, I want to introduce three key people. First and foremost is our managing director, Mike Formby. Mike Formby. Just so you know how the city works, all of these people report directly to Mike. And to help him with that incredible task is his deputy managing director, Krishna Jerem. Where's Krishna? Right next to him. These men are extraordinary. And we all share the same hearts and minds when it comes to everything that we're working on. So it's a real privilege for me to be able to work with them. There's one other person I'm just gonna make the introduction to because running this city is a very complex operation. And it's a big operation. And it's a $5.1 billion budget, which has a lot of lines and a lot of responsibility associated with it. And I don't think Andy Kuanos here tonight, but Carrie Castle, our deputy director for Budget and Fiscal Services, is here. Carrie, just want you to stand up. And... Honestly, I can't tell you the kind of time and thought that goes into it. So without any further ado, I'm gonna have them introduce themselves. We'll talk a little bit about what we... How we'd like to do this tonight with all of you. And then we'll get into it, okay? All right, so with that, I'll shut up. Good.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Samala. I'm the deputy fire chief with the Honolulu Fire Department. Born, raised, farm-raised, fresh from Waialua. Maybe not so fresh anymore. But I'm happy to be here and answer any questions that you may have.
Aloha and good evening. Edward Los Banios. I'm the deputy director for the Department of Community Services. The Department of Community Services provides its grants, takes care of our vulnerable populations on the islands, as well as everything from Keke Lu Kupuna.
Aloha, good evening. Thank you for having me. Roy Miyahira, director of Homeless Solutions. Self-explanatory, I suppose.
My name's Brian Gallagher. I'm the deputy in DPP. That's the Department of Planning and Permitting. So long-range planning, zoning, building permitting, residential, commercial approvals, so forth. Thank you.
Aloha, everyone. My name's Andy Sugg. I am the mayor's chief of staff. And it's nice to see some familiar faces. And shout out to HPD for all the help that they give us every day. Thank you, guys.
Aloha, my name is Jim Ireland. I'm the director of the Emergency Services Department, EMS, health services, and our core homeless response.
Aloha, community. I'm Roger Morton. I'm the director of Transportation Services. We operate transit on the island. We operate the bus, the handy van, Skyline. We also do the streets, the bikeways, and those things. And we have a bunch of things that we are proposing for the North Shore. And I'll just go through a few lists of them. Now, first is our Haleiwa Road Bike Path. That is, we brought that up at our last Neighborhood Board meeting. We have a meeting with Rex on Monday that we're working on our Ala Pupukea Bike Path Rehabilitation Project. We're really excited about that. Hope to get that going soon. We are... We have some speed control-ish projects on Haleiwa Road and on Waialua Beach Road. Those will be designed this year. And this Tuesday, we have a stakeholder meeting, a community meeting for our proposed Haleiwa Mobility Center. We have three sites that we're looking at. And invite everybody to come to Waialua Elementary School at 6:00 PM on Tuesday. Mahalo.
Okay, that's a tough act to follow. I'm Laura Thielen, the director of the City and County Department of Parks and Recreation. We are looking to hire people for our Summer Fund Program that's gonna be starting this summer. So if you have young adults coming in, or even younger, like teenagers, we will hire, we pay well, and they will have an enjoyable time and learn a lot of leadership skills. So please come and see me afterwards.
Aloha, mai kako. My name is Ka'ili Trask O'Connell, and I'm the executive director of MOKA, which is the mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts. And something to be on the lookout for is our Vaipana Program. I encourage you all to check it out at vaipana.com. But what that is, is an art installation project, public art installations. And we will be having one coming here to Haleiwa in September.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Loi Yoninaka. I am the executive secretary for the Neighborhood Boards. I know we have a couple of... A few board members here. If you could raise your hand and stand up, I'd like to acknowledge them. There you go. Thank you for serving on the boards.
Aloha, everyone. Kathleen Paheenui. I'm representing the Board of Water Supply tonight. Proud North Shore resident. Go Bulldogs!
Aloha mai pākahiā pa'o. Ova'o oke aloha, Fox. No kuni'a mai au. Ova'o kahope kahu olaloa. Ame kahope po'o. No keke ana loli'a ni'a. Ma lama'aaina. Ame ke'ola'lo'a. Ke'loha, Fox. Deputy for the Office of Climate Change, Sustainability, and Resiliency. I have krasmakani crab from our team in the back there in the green shirt. We are doing Oahu's first-ever food plan. And so what we want to do is make sure we're getting your input on the food needs up here in the North Shore. And I'm also proud and privileged to represent Mayor Blangiardi and Chair Kathleen Paheenui as the mayor's North Shore Neighborhood Rep.
Aloha, everyone. Good evening. I'm Carrie Castle, deputy director with Budget and Fiscal Services. Thank you for having us tonight. Really appreciate being here.
Aloha, I'm Amy Osselby. I'm with the Office of Economic Revitalization. I have a couple of my colleagues with me here in the back, Dominique and Glenn, with the Oahu Business Connector. If you have any questions about your business or are interested in starting one up, they can help you out. Thanks.
Hello, hi, everyone. I'm Kevin Ogier. I'm the executive director for the mayor's office of housing. And we lead the city's housing development, finance, and policy initiatives. Thanks so very much for having us tonight.
Aloha, good evening. My name is Megan Johnson. I'm the deputy director for the Department of Customer Services. Our department administers three different divisions. We administer the satellite city halls, the Division of Motor Vehicles, and the city's Public Communications Division. Thank you for being here.
Aloha, everyone. I'm Mike O'Keefe with the Department of Environmental Services, or ENV. We manage all of the city's solid waste and wastewater infrastructure. Thanks for having us tonight.
Hello, everybody. My name is Adam Lerner, Assistant Chief of Ocean Safety, newly-formed Ocean Safety Department. See a lot of familiar faces around here. Thank you. I honestly had no idea it was gonna be this kind of reception, but thank you. First off, I want to thank the mayor and his whole department, his staff, administration, all our council members, representatives of the community. Everyone has been amazingly supportive on our journey as a new department. It's been wild. It's kind of fun being the darling of the city, but we realize what's ahead, so... I just want to thank everybody for being here. Thank you, thank you. About me, I was born and raised out here. I want to claim Bulldogs because my wife went to Waialua, but I actually went to Kahuku, so go Red Raiders. But thank you.
Good evening, everybody. And I'd like to say really a big mahalo to all of you for giving your time up to come here. I think it shows all of us here how important the issues you have tonight are for you. My name is Bobby Town. I am the District Two Commander. District Two covers all of the North Shore, Waihewa, and Mililani.
Aloha, Joe Logan. I have the honorable pleasure of being the chief of the Honolulu Police Department and leading the wonderful men and women of the Honolulu Police Department.
Hello, everyone. Kitora, deputy chief, HPD. Honored to be here and honored to serve our community.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Valea Constantino. Also born and raised on the North Shore here. It's been my distinct honor to run the film office for a number of years and work with this wonderful team to facilitate all of the filming requests. And also with my specific film office team to do all of the marketing and the business support for that sector of economic development.
Aloha, I'm Kira Shushom, chief data officer for the City and County Honolulu. I'm here actually to help streamline data management here for the city. And I work for everybody here on this stage. Thank you.
Aloha. My name's Brian McKee. I'm the chief information officer and the director of the Information Technology Department. I'm here to answer any questions about technology, how we're making the city more efficient, and how we're trying to push automation and all the other things within the IT realm. So thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bugs Baggio, Assistant Director of Human Resources. And a Waialua High School graduate, late 1980s sometime. But we are hiring. As you can see from the mayor's press conferences, his state of the city, we're hiring. So if any of you are interested or your family members, please come see any one of us, myself or my outreach team in the back. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Walter. I'm the acting director of the Department of Emergency Management. And we help coordinate the city's planning and response for disasters and emergencies. And one request we had for everybody here tonight is to sign up for a new alert system. One of our big pushes is to get information to people more quickly that has more details when there's an emergency. And we've recently upgraded a system you can subscribe to. It is called HNL Alert. You can go to hnlalert.gov and create an account. Back there, we have some brochures. If you are very low-tech and would like to sit in your seat right now and send a text message to 888-777 that says "HNL Alert", you will be signed up. So 888-777-HNLAlert, and you will stay informed that way. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lori Kahikina, executive director and CEO of Heart. We are responsible for building the rail system for the city and county of Honolulu. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Kubota, deputy director of the Department of Enterprise Services. So we cover the Blaisdell Center, Wakiki Shell, the Honolulu Zoo, and the six municipal golf courses, including Kahuku Golf Course. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Aloha and good evening. My name is Warren Mamizuka. I am the deputy director for the Department of Facility Maintenance. Go Big Red! Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. All right. And if I may, there's one other very, very important department that's here tonight. And that's our Department of Communications. Scott Humber, the gentleman over there, is our director. Ian Shering right there is our deputy director. Ryan Wilson right there is on our team. And Brandy Heag is in the room somewhere. The four of them, they do an extraordinary job, especially in setting up these town halls. So this is our second town hall of the year. We did one two weeks ago in Nanakali. We're gonna do seven this year. But in the prior two years, we've done 22. So this is our 24th. We love doing these town halls. I want to get into that in a minute. We try to make each and every one unique to the environment because what we've learned, there are certain common denominators that we hear and experience as we go around the island, that there are some things that just make every community unique. And we know this one truly is. And we want to celebrate that tonight. So to start off tonight, we're gonna do something very special that we won't be doing in any other town hall. And we're gonna have Adam Lerner come up here and explain to you. We're gonna recognize our lifeguards, our EMS, our dispatchers, and a few people with a very special recognition.
Appreciate it, thank you. I'd like to actually call up all my lifeguards over there. If you guys can come up here. All right, I was gonna try and wing this, but I actually took some notes because of full transparency. I wasn't there that day, so bear with me. I'm gonna read through this. Okay, I'm not sure if all of you know, but a few months back on February 23rd at approximately 8:50 AM, our lifeguards at Eukai Beach Park received a call for a surfer in distress at Pipeline. Mind you, that day, the waves were about eight to 10 feet, rising swell. Those of you that live out here or surf out here know that when Pipe is picking up like that, it's usually not very friendly. But that day, something happened that changed a lot of us here. It changed me, changed the community, changed some people out there I can see right now. But just want you to know that there was actually a group of surfers that started all off. So when that 29-year-old male ran into trouble, we really want to thank this group of surfers. It's not uncommon for the people in lineup to be an extension of us. And I can't sing the praise. I don't know if anybody's here that was a part of that, some of the surfers. Hopefully, they are. But they started off. So they went to the rescue of this 20-year-old male. Our lifeguards proceeded to paddle out on a rescue board, a bunch of them. They, with the help of the surfers, got this individual on the rescue board, which, once again in itself, a 10-foot pipe is not something that normal humans can do. They proceeded to bring this patient to shore where they started a round of CPR. After a couple rounds of CPR, amazingly, this young male regained a pulse. Shortly thereafter, Honolulu EMS Department showed up, co-responded, and took over, administered advanced lifesaving techniques, and the patient was transported to an area hospital. So I read that. I know I'm like half jumbling reading this, but just reading that out loud without reading the paper here gives me chicken skin. Just to give you some context of the kind of year that we've been through, trying to get choked up here. But starting at the end of last summer, we lost one of our coworkers, a really close, dear friend of mine, Tamayo Perry. He was a classmate, grew up with him. So that's how we started off. And then we proceeded to run into probably one of the craziest winters, I think, we've ever had. And I'm saying that as I actually worked out there, but nowadays, I sit in the fancy office and don't do that. These guys went through one of the craziest winters I can ever remember growing up out here. It was just nonstop. So you think about what happened with our coworker, and then they proceeded to do this. I just want to give them recognition. I want to thank them for what they do every day. I'm just a guy up here talking in a fancy black suit. But they do all the work, and I'm proud to be their boss. It's hard to even say that sometimes, but yeah, I'm blown away just how these guys wake up every morning and do what they do, whether it's sheer determination, training, whatever it is. I don't know what it is. I'm blown away that they go out there and put their lives, their own lives, at risk for random strangers all the time. So it's really cool. I want to make sure that you all recognize that's something that these guys do every day. It doesn't matter our office. We... Our office can be sunny and it's the most beautiful day, and everybody's like, "Wow, I love your job." And then there's days where it's raining, and it sucks, and it's not very fun. But they get up and they do what they do every day. So I just want to thank them personally for what they did that day. And I want to thank all the agencies, HFD, EMS, HPD, everyone that helps us, and everyone's been like part of our team over the years supporting us. But one of the main persons I want to thank, I don't know if he's here yet, is Makai. Is Makai here? I see Liam here. I want to thank Makai because, not to get funny and jokey, but I just want to thank Makai for not dying that day because it would have been a lot different up here right now. But thank you. Thanks, Makai. And thanks to these guys for saving his life.
Guys, stay up here. Makai, I'm gonna bring up your dad. Is Liam here? Yeah. Liam? Right here. You're Liam. I thought it was Liam. He said, "Was it Dad?" Okay.
Well, we want to get Eli and Hunter up here. They were the two people. Want to get to them first? Yeah. I've known Eli my whole life. I've just met Hunter. We have... His brother's actually a lifeguard on the east side. So it's a... You know, there's all these little connections. Makai's probably one of the really good friends. I've known Liam forever. He's my neighbor, too. Sadly, this is not my first time having a close member be a lifeguard on the North Shore. We are a tight community. We know each other through weather, junior guards, Food Land. Just, we know each other. And it's a... We kind of... I don't know how to word this. Usually, the people we rescue is usually people we know, especially at a dangerous place like Pipeline. Pipeline's probably the most dangerous spot in the world. And sadly, it's always kind of somebody we know. And like Chief said, this has probably been the nutsdest winter. Last nine months has been probably the nutsdest thing I've ever seen in the last 20 years of lifeguarding, from Tamayo to the Eddie, which your son won. Congratulations. Two, we've had eight deaths up here. You know, we've had two... Four at Keiki. Three, I guess, maybe. One at Three Tables, two at Charles Cove, one at Mokalea. So... And three pro surfers, two broke their backs, and Makai almost died. And that was a team effort of getting Makai back to life. You know, I thank Eli and Hunter because they're the ones that got to him first. You know, we just got to the beach. We were setting it up, just kind of getting the rate. I remember putting my coffee down like, "Ray, okay, here's the day going." And it just started out that way. And yeah, I'm actually proud of these guys because a lot of the guys that were on that case were new guys. These guys have all been in probably like two, three, four, maybe less than that. And the way they performed, I was the old goat up there on that case. And to see these guys perform, I'm actually proud of all you guys. You guys are in the new generation, so keep it up. Let's... Winter's not over. I still think it is.
All right, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna... We have certificate, award of recognition for each and every one of them. I'm only gonna read one. We're gonna pass them out. Matt Wires here from the city council. Anything you want to say about what you're gonna hand out, sir? Yep? Okay. You let me go first? Thank you, Matt. That's good. So I'm just gonna read the first one. It goes to Lieutenant Kyle Foyle. And they all say the same thing, guys. It says, "In recognition of your extraordinary bravery, swift action, and unwavering commitment to saving lives demonstrated on February 23rd, 2025 in the heroic rescue of surfer Makai McNamara, your immediate response, expert lifesaving skills, and steadfast dedication in the face of a life-threatening emergency were instrumental in preserving a life. Your courage and professionalism embody the very best of Honolulu's ocean safety and serve as an inspiration to us all. Greatest watermen in the world, ladies and gentlemen. Kyle Foyle." Ian Bachmann. Keegan Dunn. Keegan. Congratulations, thank you. Luke Kurtz. Hey, Luke. Joshua Boudjorov. Josh. Kainoa Andrade. Right here. Kainoa. Robert Beal. Is Robert here? He's not here. Jaren Chong. Jaren Chong. Hey, Jaren. Dispatcher, dispatcher, Matthew Kimma. Matthew. Matthew will get it to you. There he comes. Child, come on up, Matthew. This is great. Thank you, Matt. So Jeff's going to take it. These are for two paramedics. Chris Nitter? EMT Matteo Mariano. They're not here tonight, and Jeff is taking them on his behalf. You're welcome, Jeff. Thank you. All right, these are the surfers. Eli Olsen. So Makai, we're going to give this to you. It's for Landon. Landon McNamara. Makana Peng. Okay. He's going to walk in and do it anymore? Thank you. And Hunter Reynus. Hunter, thank you so much. You're welcome, Patrick. And Patrick Monahan. Sorry about that, Patrick. You're going back. All right, that's it. How about an incredible round of applause for them, please?
I just wanted to thank everyone here for saving my son. This is a $1,000 check for the North Shore Junior Lifeguard Program.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very, very much. And I suspect since I see the incomparable Denise Antonelli in the audience, this won't be our last time talking about ocean safety tonight. Thank you very much, guys. Congratulations. Mahalo for everything you do. Thank you. Thank you. And thank all of you for that wonderful applause and moment of recognition. We appreciate that. All right, so let's just talk about what we hope to get accomplished tonight. We have about 90 minutes. We start on time. We're on Olo for two hours. And what we want to be able to do is answer as many questions as we possibly can. A couple of things, though, that I want to say about this. First of all, we don't have any filthy questions, so you can come up, you can ask us anything you want. You may not like the answer. We won't try to dodge anything. We're going to try to be as truthful with you as we possibly can, and hopefully you might like the answer. And as I said earlier, for nothing else, if it involves somebody behind me, you'll have a direct contact with them for whatever follow-up, okay? That's number one. Number two, I know the issues are complex in some cases, so I'm going to ask you not to make any speeches up here, okay? And I don't want to be rude and cut somebody off, but part of what has happened in the past, where we've tried to allow people that voice, what happens is things get backed up, we never get to enough questions. The reason why we brought our whole cabinet out here is to try to answer as many questions to make this two-hour period you're spending with us as meaningful as possible. Third, I know from district to district, there's built-up frustration over some issues. Can appreciate that. We're trying to do everything we possibly can as a team. All I ask of you is you be civil, okay? You be civil to us, we will be civil back to you. And that's how I'd like to keep the tone of the evening. And so far, we've had no problems with that, but it's fair warning, if you will. And then the other thing is that I don't want to beat a horse to death, okay? So there are topics here, and there's some topics bigger than others, maybe more important. But I think once we've covered a topic, I want to move on to the next. So I really don't want to have, you know, seven or eight people talking about the same thing. That won't accomplish why we came out here. Okay, so we want to try to get in as many different questions as we can, and that involves you. So I'll try to make sure if we get on something that requires whatever goes on, to make sure we've answered everything thoroughly before we move on. But let's try to keep it that way, if we can, okay? There was one other thing, and I can't remember it, but it'll come to me. Okay? Oh, yeah, I know what it is. There's no need to form a line. If you do that, you're going to cut off everybody from a line of sight. I promise you, we'll get to you, have the patience. Just come up one at a time. We'll deal with you, go back, somebody else can come up. I would imagine this is not a shy group, so I don't know the problem. We want to provide the access to the microphone to you. But, you know, we've learned before, having a long line of people, it's just that that's not good, okay? So that's it. We don't have a lot of other rules. Other than that, let's make it as meaningful for you as we possibly can. So with that said, who's up first? You have to say your name.
My name is Bob, and I want to thank you for this opportunity.
You got it, Bob.
I have a letter here that I got an email on dated April 3, and it's asking for a designation on the public facilities infrastructure map for 250 acres in the Pineapple Fields for, well, for the landfill and another public facilities facility. And nobody out here likes that idea. It's beyond the no-pass line. It'll be an eyesore and a visual plane. It's on our all-our-plan, say it's ag land, it's taking productive ag land out. And the biggest threat is that pollution to our water table. And everybody knows that, but because this letter is a week old, and it's asking to put it on a public facilities map, this project is not stopped. It isn't stalled. It's going forward today. And so I'm voicing opinion to see what we can do to slow that down or stop it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mike, do you want to say anything about it? I'll be happy to talk about the landfill, if you will. We know it's a very controversial topic. So when we came into office, this is going to take a couple of minutes, but since you just said everybody knows, everybody feels the same way, then let me address it as mayor, okay? First of all, we came into office in 2021. We inherited the demand, if you will, it was already set in place to vacate Waimea Nalo Gouche in 2028. And that landfill has been out there, will be for 35 years by the time we vacate. And we knew we were going to be challenged by that thing, so we established a landfill advisory committee. And there were six sites that were designated for that landfill advisory committee. It was really a top group of people in charge of that. And so they went out and we gave them one year to evaluate. And in December and November, at the end of the year in '21, if you remember, it was bad enough when we started out in the middle of COVID. That was challenging enough as a new team. But to take this on, understanding that we had a moral responsibility to communities to solve this problem, and a mandate from the Land Use Commission of the state to vacate, our backs were against the wall. So they went out and did this in earnest, evaluated six sites, and then Red Hill happened. And when Red Hill happened at the latter part of 2021, that changed the entire dialogue about landfills or potential landfill sites because of the toxicity and the concern for the drinking water as a result of the leakage that took place at Red Hill. Now, anecdotally, just so you know, those tanks at Red Hill, the 24 of them, were built in the early '40s, '43. And anybody in the military, any military historian would tell you those tanks saved, really, World War II for the United States. The reason why we were victorious in the Pacific. Those tanks are huge. It's hard to imagine, absent the technology that was available, that they could put 24 tanks in a mountain, each the size of the Statue of Liberty, and with corresponding tunnels. It is really, if you've never been there, it is a phenomenal piece of construction, and how they did it was amazing during the times that they did it. And just as a testimonial to what man can achieve on the duress. Those tanks, that location was 100 feet over an aquifer. Those tanks, having been maintained for many years, were single-hulled. And those tanks were set up to have gravitational pull, to have the fuel come down the mountains for fueling. So the weight of all of that. So there was a terrible accident, and there was a terrible leakage, and it wasn't necessarily the first one, but this was the most disastrous. And it led to, as we all know, the federal government, after we were part of that, a lot of discussions, de-fueling Red Hill. Something that I can tell you in the beginning, the military said would never happen, happened, okay? So all of that is what it is. We were then, we were then the recipients, if you will, of our land advisory commission telling us that as a result of that, they were not going to recommend any landfill site. Of the six landfill sites that they had, they were all over aquifers. All of our drinking water on Oahu is over an aquifer, okay? All of it, other than the coastal regions. That then led, based on their non-recommendation, that gave us a great segue to go to the military, especially the Navy, because they were looking to work with us. They were looking for a make-good, something they could do to perhaps gain back some public trust to help us. And Mike Formby and myself were afforded countless meetings up at IndopayCon, not only with Admiral Aguilino, who at the time was the head of IndopayCon, but Admiral Puparo, who is now head of, and a whole bunch of people. And for two years, because of the prowess, if you will, of that command, we dealt with all military installations around the island, not just Navy sites. And at the end of the day, after over a year, almost two years of study and back and forth, because this was an unprecedented request from us, we actually selected Waipio Peninsula. And we thought that Waipio Peninsula, there were three sites recommended. One was Luululele, non-starter, because it was also on the west side, and we made a commitment to Y and I. The other was Bellows, non-starter for us. It was not going to happen. Waipio Peninsula seemed feasible. It would mean, though, however, we'd have to displace the soccer fields, which in and of itself would be a huge challenge. But at the same time, correspondingly, we made a deal with the Navy, and we took over 405 acres in Kalailoa, property that they were willing to deal with us, of which we had designated a site in which we would rebuild the Waipio Soccer Complex. Before any kid ever missed a game or any team ever missed a game, we would build something really special out there, especially with the shift in the population. And that seemed to be our game plan. And then, you know, because of national security reasons, and that's probably the best I'm comfortable telling you, that got taken off the boards from the standpoint we couldn't go there. We were then left to go back to evaluate the six sites. The site that you just mentioned, sir, is probably the most isolated site. It happens to be 800 feet over an aquifer. And with all the discussions we had over an extended period of time with experts, I'm totally convinced, and this is where I'm going to take issue with what you said about toxic to the drinking water, that we could build a landfill 800 feet over an aquifer, and in fact, we were going to double down on what we were going to do, and really build a hazardous landfill, the same you would do for hazardous waste, which would not be hazardous waste. Ash that comes from landfill is not categorized that way. But we're going to build a landfill there using 90 acres that would be very safe, and not dangerous to anybody. It would take years to build. It would take, we'd have to widen. A lot of stuff would go into the doing this in order to comply. It might even, whatever it is, require a short-term extension. It's not like an overnight kind of a deal. But if you haven't been to Waimea Nalo Gouche, if you haven't seen a landfill that now is 95% ash, if I took you there, you might say, where's the landfill? It doesn't look like a landfill. You know, I grew up as a kid with dumps, where you could smell the garbage a mile away. And when you got there, there'd be seagulls all over the place and rats bigger than cats chasing the cats. Where it's very, nothing like that, which I think is a misconception on what landfills look like today. So that said, that to us was the safest landfill. Now, just so you know, with 35-year-old technology, with only a single, well, it's a double lineup, but just called the double a single, we haven't had one leak, one leak up at Waimea Nalo Gouche in 35 years. We were going to double down four, okay, plus pumps to technology that's available today. Just think about the world that we're in today in technology. Mike Formby and I driving out here today, we're talking about how far advanced it is. The technology and the science we would employ today, and the safety issues that we would take on, making sure that rainwater, which also comes down, wouldn't even get 12 inches below the ground, we feel really comfortable in doing. And the last thing any of us would do is to build anything that would create toxicity for present or certainly future generations. Now, we have a real serious issue about Waimea Nalo Gouche, and we're waiting to see what happens. Also, what happened in the interim after that was the legislature passed a bill, Act 73, Bill 73, that prohibits us on buffer zones of a half mile, which also creates a problem on other alternative sites. And if they were to rescind that, which I believe they never will, that would only mean we'd move it closer to homes or hospitals or other things that we don't want to do, that you wouldn't want to do, that could create more concern. So I understand what you're saying about agricultural land. I also know the acreage in agricultural land. And I also know this particular site, while not recommended, was not redlined, was just a bright line of caution. And we have every confidence that we could build something really safe, and it's really an isolated area. We're just going to have to see how this plays out. If in fact, we're not allowed to do that, then we're going to have to go back to a different drawing board in a different way. Then right now, quite honestly, we don't have a viable alternative. But it's not about something that we did capricious. We put as much due diligence and study into this as anything that we have done as a team. And I'm really proud of what we've accomplished in our first four years. I'm excited beyond my ability to articulate to you what we're going to get done before we leave in the course of the next four. But there was nothing capricious about this. And we've got a federal state, we've got a state law that says we got to be out of there. So if we can't do it there, it's really, like I said, everything is over an aquifer. The only other thing that people don't talk about that I'm going to say, and I had to verify just the other day, is that there are gas tanks all over our islands, everywhere, and all over an aquifer. And only the big stations that have like the 24 gas stations there are the ones that are required to put a vault around those tanks, so it's sort of double-lined with metal. We have those everywhere, but nobody talks about that, because why? They're EPA compliant. Well, we would be EPA compliant too, but not with much more security than that. So we're comfortable in our position as a safety measure and a contribution to this island. We're trying to solve a problem candidly that should have been solved a long time ago, was kicked down the road, kicked down the road, and we inherited it. And I think we've come a long way since we got in office in '21. So it hangs in the balance. So there you go, Bob. That's the story. Anybody have any questions on that? Anybody have an alternative suggestion? Let me just ask you, there's a couple of things that you should be aware of statistically speaking. One, we turn out a million tons a year of opala, a million tons. And that's not even counting Waikiki and the military. counting Waikiki, and the military takes care of their own. That's on average, just as you're sitting there, think about your own behaviors and what you do, each and every one of us generates, creates 2,000 pounds of garbage a year. That's what a million tons represents. And what are we going to do with that? That is a serious social issue. Michael Keefe is here talking about ENV. I don't know if you know this, flushing toilets, not a very sexy topic to talk about, okay? 100 million gallons a day on wastewater, 100 million gallons a day. The complexity of these issues is beyond what most people even want to begin to think about, that are done to add to the quality of our lives and things we take automatic. But when something happens like this, and we're trying to solve a problem, it's not an easy problem to solve. So I just want to pass that on to everybody. We're going to have to do something with a landfill because you can't start burying it in your own backyard. We have a responsibility here, and we also have an obligation to get it out of the west side, which we're going to uphold. Okay? Thank you. Next question. Ma'am.
Hi, my name is Catherine Delano. Thank you all for coming here today. I was wondering if it's possible to get a dog park in, up here, because the closest one to here is like in Milalani, and I know I'm looking at the right person, right? Yeah. Hi.
Thank you for the question. We are about to send out letters to all of the neighborhood boards. We took a look at our parks around the island, and we have 10 off-leash dog parks and only 36 parks that allow on-leash dogs. So we know that we need to offer more opportunity for people to bring their dogs, both on-leash and off-leash. So we're sending out letters to the neighborhood board to get community input. Each letter is going to have all the parks in those board communities. We encourage you to work with your board to identify locations that would be suitable for either on-leash or off-leash dog parks. We have a master agreement with a fencing company, and we're able to work with them to put in off-leash dog parks. Those do need to be fenced to make sure the dogs don't go into areas that are unsafe or co-mingle with other park users. One of the challenges we have for the off-leash dog parks is we need to have them be large enough. Otherwise, if you put a lot of dogs in a small fenced area, it actually creates a lot of bad behaviors by the dogs, and a lot of our parks are not big enough to have both off-leash and all the other activities that we're doing. So that's why we wanted to get the input from the communities about the locations. We do want to make more spaces available. We've recently built a dog park in Koneohe, an off-leash one. We're putting one into Makiki. We're taking a look at other areas as well, and then more of the on-leash parks as well, because we want to make places safe for everyone. We also are looking for input on signage to help remind people in a positive way how to be more responsible, and we're looking into having those doggy-baggy dispenser stations, because we tried those in Waikiki, and that has really increased the amount of dog poop that people pick up. So your thoughts and, and ideas would be very welcome, and our idea would be to give the boards enough time over the summer to get input, and then in the fall to start working.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Hope that answers your question, yes? Okay. Who's up? I know you, sir. Hiya, George.
Good afternoon, sir. My name is George Grace. I'm a Kapole resident, Y and I site. From Waillua to Kohuku, my business, Paradise Lua, I got almost 600 toilets rented on this side of the island. So this, this community is really, really a staple in my business. But I, I didn't want to beat the dead horse. You gave us a thing about the landfill, yeah? But I really got to encourage you, waste your energy, Mr. Bear. We brought you some literature on Sweden. We got all the way from Kapole to here, and found out we forgot the folders at our office. So at the next meeting, we bring you to Japan and Sweden. You really got to study this stuff. We should be burning that rubbish and making energy.
You know, we've begun to have those conversations, because what happens if we can't, it's a global study. So George, I appreciate the information, and I can promise you, we have a team of people that's really smart. When we have to look at something totally different, we're willing to look at that. There's actually a third technology that we've just begun to look at as well, so.
Please, please do.
Look, we want to be open-minded. We're trying to solve the problem.
Yes.
Like I say, garbage is not going to go away. This is something we got to take care of, because if we, if we don't, just think, imagine you've all experienced this. If, for some reason, the garbage doesn't get picked up at your house, believe me, our phones ring. If some reason, for some reason, when that happens, and it happens on occasion, it's amazing, right? People freak over that. This is a real pressing problem, so I promise you.
It is. It'll be devastating if the rubbish don't get picked up.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing I would say to you about some of these competing global technologies, these are countries, we're an island.
Yes.
Economics of this, the cost of this is prohibitive, and that's the challenge. I don't have $10 billion.
No, we don't.
To burn a landfill. I know, I'm being facetious, but the numbers are just as staggering, whatever they are, and that's what we have to figure out. Because you talk about a country like Japan, or these other places, there's a whole lot of different resources that goes into that.
I'm going to get you some in the United States that's burning rubbish.
George, I hope you can save the day, baby.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, this cannot be a shy crowd, not out here tonight. Well, we're, anybody on anything, yes, come on up. Good to see you again.
Good evening, mayor and mayor's people. Mahalo for coming out. My name is Carol Phillips. I want to thank the Waillua Community Association for hosting us. It's so nice to be back at this venue. It's a really incredible venue. Big mahalo. So there's a famous musician in our town, I forget his name, but he wrote a song about the three Rs, which is reduce, recycle, and reuse. And I think that, you know, that I think is a direction we need to go in with, with that, so I, I would be.
We're doing a lot of recycling. Mike, you want to take, we're doing a lot of stuff. What are we not doing? People have to reduce their, their own garbage, right? I mean, we can't control other people's behavior. We're left with the cleanup detail. We're doing some pretty aggressive recycling, in fact, we're about to announce the composting that we're going to begin doing, which is a major, going to take a major change, and we're trying to reuse whatever we can. I, we, we, we talk about it all the time, as island dwellers, we have something more unique circumstances anywhere, anyplace, and we want to be as intelligent about that as possible, want to be as much in the 21st century. Some of this stuff is simplistic, with all due respect to that song, okay? There are no simple solutions. I just want you to know that, you know? And so we're open to anything, and may very well be that this will end up being a catalyst to doing something we never thought we would do, but we'll do it out of necessity and, and try to do it as intelligently as possible, so.
So, so thank you, and just a couple more.
Go ahead.
Points.
No speeches, but.
No, no, no speeches.
Go ahead.
Is, so we're getting ready to do the Haleeva Walkways Project, so I'm wondering what the update on that was, and just wanted to encourage you guys to, you know, work closely with the businesses so that we can mitigate the, the effects of that. And then a little specific issue is, well, one of my pet projects is there's a bus stop in front of the Waillua Courthouse, which is one of our precious historical buildings, and, you know, we've asked time and time again, and we get feedback that the bus company likes where the bus stop is.
Okay.
And so we hope you could give us an update on that.
I can't think of anybody to answer a better question about the bus than Roger Morton. Okay. Roger's our director of transportation services, but he ran the bus for how many years? Decades?
Well, on that particular project, we, we are out there right now, sort of collecting the community's sentiment for all that. We have three different designs that we're looking at at this point. We will be completing our environmental review by the end of next year, so it's not something that's going to happen immediately. We're in a design phase right now, and as Mayor said, I've been, I was with the bus for many, many years. I promise you, we'll take care of the bus and historical places by the bus.
Mahalo, and then just.
Just remember, this is being live television, being recorded. You've just got Roger Morton to promise you he's going to take care of it.
Thank you, okay. And then just, it's not a speech, it's just a request. Our lifeguards need raises. They really do. So, thank you.
I, I, I hear you. Look, we're trying, you heard, you heard Adam earlier, we're trying to pour as much love on these guys as possible. You realize the facility that we're building in, in Kailoa, right, really, in the interest of Lakonikai, is the first standalone facility that's been built for ocean safety in 107 years, okay? So our first step was to separate them, make their own independent department, and we're doing a whole lot of other things, we'll get around to that. All of our first responders, I have HBD here tonight, and EMS, and our firefighters. Being mayor, I used to be aware of first responders because I came out of the media business and did countless stories involved in our newsroom. When you work with these men and women who really put their lives on the line, as Adam said, for strangers, they could die that day for strangers. How many people even willing to do that? And that's true of all the disciplines and the work that they do. So we're going to take very good care of our first responders, they're a cherished asset of this city and county.
Mahalo. Thank you.
Oh, you, you had a question about the paving project for Haleeva Walkways Project?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah. So the Department of Design and Construction, who's managing the project, can't be here tonight. I'm the former deputy in the Department of Design and Construction. They're planning on starting construction late this summer, and they're going to come out and do additional community notification and, and coordination for, just on the final design and layout sometime in May. But they're getting really close to starting that project, and we're all looking forward to it, because it's been a long time coming, so hopefully get it, get it done quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
My name is Lynell DeMarte. I was born and raised out here on the North Shore. I am a 1974 grad from Kohuku High School. Nine out of 11 of us graduated from Kohuku, and that's pretty good steps. Anyway, my grandson, I have 13 grandkids, now this is number 12. My grandson said to me the other day, Grandma, how come you, you work so hard? Don't you ever get tired? And I says, boy, you know, I'm only at the Kohuku High School. He said, but you got two jobs. I says, no. And I'm thinking, well, I hope this kid can count. He's 10 years old, I have only one job. No, Grandma, you have that other job, that other job of protecting the Ina, protecting our water. And I, that was one of my most proudest moment of my grand, for my grandson, for him to have been able to recognize that, to understand that, to observe, and to be able to express it to me.
Well, you're a great example. You're a great, you're a great example.
Well, thank you. So anyway, so like, we, we know kids, right? They're, they have very selective hearing. They only listen to what they want to listen, right? So for my grandson to actually listen to when I speak made all the difference in the world. He better understands what his kuliana will be in the future, just like all of you guys here.
Okay. So you're going to ask a question, right? I want to be nice. You came up here with the Haleeva Choir or whatever this is behind you. So what's the question?
There, there really is no question.
Oh.
I actually wanted to compliment all of you, mahalo all of you, for actually listening to the people of this land, right? Because.
Thank you.
Look where we are now.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
So. Okay, all right.
Very disharmin. Yeah. All right, you got a question, go ahead.
Okay, so it's a super quick mahalo, you guys, for.
Thank you very much, by the way. Thank you for that.
And I'm going to add on to what she said, because she started, and it does end with the question, but starting with mahalo for the North Shore First Responder Center, we listened to the state of the city. I have my daughter here, she wanted to give a quick, super fast.
Thank you for helping our community with the First Responder Center.
We know, and you know, we know that our lifeguards are EMS, they need facilities, they need better facilities. Here is the question.
Yes.
8,700 of us signed the petition, we're right behind your team. How can we, what can we do, Mayor? How can we help you?
Okay, thank you for the question. I tell you, as soon as we get the deal inked, and we're in process of making, getting the deal done, we'll talk about that, because we would love to involve the community about this. We're really excited about it. When I said in the state of the city, this is going to be a transformative project for the entire North Shore, I sincerely meant that. This is an incredible opportunity, all of you, and I told Denise, deserve a lot of credit. You know, we took all those meetings, and I thought we're just time and again running into a wall, running into the wall. I feel so blessed that through a lot of, and for a lot of different reasons, the whole thing got reversed and put it into a place where I think it's going to be really in the most positive way. I just want to say one thing, I probably shouldn't do this, but I'm going to do it. Andrew Yanni has been the point person on this deal for us, and Andrew Yanni was somebody who I went to multiple times, asking, because he represented a family, if there was any consideration under any circumstances. And he was really precluded from saying there was, because quite honestly, in order to sell something to the city, if they wanted to, it'd be far below what they could possibly get for that property to anybody else. Plus, they had their own family commitment, it was positioned to us right from the beginning. It was the legacy of the family to build that complex. A lot has happened that allows them to create a win-win for us and the community at a cost, a financial cost to them, considerable financial cost. So whatever went on in the past, I don't know all of that, but I noticed some anger, as we said, frustration, maybe even people were demonized. I would only ask on a going-forward basis, in the spirit of what you could do to help us. Let's look at this blessing, let's look at this incredible opportunity, something I did not think would be possible. And I came out of the private sector, we made deals, and I understand when it comes down to money, it's always about the money. This was not about the money. This is about these people wanting to do what's right for the North Shore, and I feel so grateful that we're going to get a chance to do that, not only benefit our ocean safety, but benefit all of our people out here on what we can get done. This was a great break. Whatever energy you put into the universe, whatever prayers, whatever, I thank you all for it, because somehow, it's almost miraculous how this came around. I mean, this is more than a 180, because there's a lot of deal points that had to get in line to even make this feasible, and they have. So bravo to all of you for your persistence and your vigilance. And, thank you. Oh, yeah. Hey Denise, what'd you do with the scroll? You know, that was in my, I, I could probably get more money for that scroll than I could, no, no, it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, here comes up Rex. I love it, Rex, when you come up. This is, this woman's mastered the art of guilt. She has really done a great job. Never trust a schoolteacher, but go ahead. I'm just kidding.
Thank you, sir. We really appreciate you being our mayor and caring and listening to our community. Tonight, I have some letters from my students, my third graders at Sunset Beach Elementary School. They are very, very grateful that you're working on getting us a new bike path, and they've expressed that in these letters, and I, I am so grateful. To all the department heads here about Sharks Cove, I've run into people and they said, did you hear the news? Did you hear the news? And I go, yeah, I heard the news, and we start crying, because our community is so grateful that you've listened to us and heard how important it is for us to have a first responder center with an ambulance in our neighborhood. So thank you very much, sir, and then I hope you appreciate these letters, I know you will.
No, these are tough to read. I read them all the time, it's hard to read, but, yeah. These kids are pretty persuasive. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Come on, who else is up? Got to be somebody on anything. Yes, ma'am. There you go. Thank you.
Aloha. My name is Manu Anana. I live across of Alii Beach Park. When it rains really hard, the, the water in the culvert fills up because the drain that is located, when you're looking at the surf center on the left side, there's a cove, that drain is not functioning.
Okay.
So what happens is when the culvert takes water from Na Limu, Na Oevi, and I think So what happens is when the culvert takes water from Na Limu, Na Oevi, and I think Ni'ula, it comes across Haleiwa Road into the culvert at the park and tries to go out to the ocean. But the drain by the ocean, it's a huge cement drain, is cracked. So the stoppage is way back that I cannot get to clear it out. I used to be able to move the sand a little bit, the water would seep out, and the pressure would push everything out. January 2024, my son and I actually took our little sump pump, borrowed a generator to pump the water from the culvert onto Alii Beach Park, the grass. I did buy a second sump pump because I need one at my house, but the second one is for the park. I don't have a generator, but I need your help. So I came in June to present that.
Okay.
I left, somebody took my information, but I don't know how to get an update.
All right, so I see Warren Mazuka, who's our deputy of facilities and maintenance, talking to Laura Thiel. And one of you folks is gonna, I don't want to say it's the state. You're gonna tell her it's the state?
No, no, it's not the state.
We don't want to say that.
Oh, brother, I've been there because it's state. No, sorry, it's City and County, DLNR, state. And I gotta give credit to our park supervisor because she sent a crew in January of 2024 with their shovels.
Yes.
And I told them it ain't gonna work.
It's actually, if it's the ditch in front of Alii Beach Park, that's actually on Department of Parks and Recreation, that's their jurisdiction. But, you know, we also have our crew, our Rose Division crew out here in Waialua, and they also go out and help. And if we need to get a backup truck to suck up some of the water, to haul it out, you know, we always, you know, we're always willing to assist our sister departments, so, you know.
So when it rains heavy, are you saying that they bring the truck to suck that water out?
Well, now, it all depends because we try to be proactive during, before storms. So we do have a lot of our crews going out, you know, checking the stream mounts, checking some of the streams, concrete lines, channels that we own, and also some of the other areas that we know that is prone to flooding. So we try to take a proactive approach. You know, we do work with DPR, we work with DTS, a lot of the other departments. So with all of our resources, we do have limited amount of heavy equipment. So we talk with parks, maybe we can get together and, you know, get some of our crew guys out and help each other.
I really appreciate that. So when you come down the next time, can you call me and I'll go with you? And I'll show you exactly where I think the stoppage is or where it's plugged. Because it's not easy. I actually sent my son in there. We were really desperate to clean it out. Because we flooded in 2008. I really don't like to be flooded.
No, I understand that. So why, let's get, we'll get your name and number. I promise you.
So I gave that information last year, and I just wanted to know if there was an update or if I still need two sump pumps, one for my yard and one for the park. And I'm gonna tell you, when it rains hard, I don't sleep. My children and I actually go in and clean it out. So I'm coming to you from 2008 to now.
Okay, so we're here now, and we're gonna, I'll get your information. I'll set something up. We can probably, I'll try and meet with you next week.
So the former mayor, sorry, compliments to you, but the former mayor did send out someone. And he looked and he goes, ah, the grass ends here. So City and County property technically ends here. Now here's DLNR. I said, okay, who can we bring to the table? And then you got shoreline, right? So state, so.
So I'll set up a date where we can come out and meet with you and, you know, we'll determine, you know, if it's DLNR, if it's the city, but we'll make a determination. And if it is the city, then we'll work together.
And if it's a state, we'll get them to work with us too.
And also, if it's DLNR, we've been working very closely with them on a number of things because I used to work there, and so we have a lot of contacts back and forth. So if we need to, because I think this is the place, when we did the bike path walk, this is the area where there had been some sand pushing, and so that was affecting it too. So we can make sure that we can bring DLNR in the discussions if we need to.
I would really appreciate that. So thank you very much.
I promise you, they will follow up. I promise you, they will follow up. Okay? All right, you got it, you got it. I don't want to mess with you. I know, I got it. Come on up, sir. Just say your name.
Hi, my name is Leaf Anderson, Haleiwa resident forever. Manu is very elegant. If it was her father, he would be out there digging the place up and fixing it. I can fix it. If you give me a letter saying that you can go ahead and fix the problem at that place, I will go out there. Because it's been years we've been asking. And, you know, everybody means well, and they come in and they say, we're gonna fix it. Nothing happens. The next big rain, guess what? She's out there in the middle of the night. And, you know, I have a backhoe. I'll go over there and dig it up.
All right. I love this. I love this.
I have a PhD from Waialua High School in agriculture. So the other thing I wanted to talk to about with transportation.
Okay, go ahead.
The other day.
You just volunteered to fix this. Okay, you get a second question.
But I need a letter.
Well, you need a letter from us saying it's okay.
Because otherwise, my good friend over there is gonna be out there with his.
Chief, chief, don't arrest this guy, okay? All right, yeah.
Transportation came over here. They wanted to make a big thing and everything. There's a big sign out there, park and ride. It belongs to the city. The city has this place to be a park and ride. They don't maintain it, but it's there. And, you know, they came over there and said, oh, there's no park and ride. Hello, right there.
What's your first name again?
Leaf.
Leaf, I thought it was Leaf. Roger, let's say something.
Sure. You're talking about our mobility center that we're planning.
Yeah, and you're gonna spend a whole lot of money, and nobody's gonna use it.
We're gonna, we're gonna try to leverage our skyline system. I'll give you an example. I came out here today. I loved it. I left my office at 3:15. It took me fifty-six minutes to get to the H2 merge. It took me twenty minutes to get from the H2 merge to Haleiwa. There was, you know, there was something there. And really, when you look at the transit side, we're gonna be adding another 25,000 housing units in Ho'opili, in Ko'or Ridge, in Eva, in Kopale, on the west side. And you think it's bad now, it takes 55 minutes. You can put yourself fast forward 20 years from now and think what it's gonna be like then. So that's what we're gonna try to do. We're gonna, we'll have our rail system into town by 2031. And at that point, we really want to provide an excellent service for our residents here. And part of that is, yes, there's the park and ride there, but it still takes you two hours to get to town by bus right now. We want to make that a lot better. And that's what, that's our plan.
There's a trick to that too. And all those houses that you're building, 90% of them are not for Hawaii people. We need to control the influx because we're not gonna have water for the new, for the other guys to come. We have to stop this in its tracks.
I hear you. I've got to give the mic to DPP though, because it's not a transportation issue.
They're all listening. They all hear it.
But that's, that's what we're up against is, is that we're up against, that we're still growing. And, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make an investment with federal dollars. That's what we're trying to do.
You know, when you raise cattle, I used to raise cattle. When the grass gets low, you cannot put any more cows inside. Our water is gonna start getting low. And then what? Or the answer to that is, we're gonna put desalinization? That's not an answer.
Yeah.
That's not an answer. I don't care. No.
I hear you, but just last thing. Tuesday, we're having a community meeting at Waialua's Elementary School. We'll be there at 6:00 PM. Please come.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, thank you.
I'm always around.
Thank you, Leaf. Thank you. We'll follow up. We're gonna get your contact information.
Give her a call. She's gonna call me. We'll come down. I'll explain what you guys need to do.
We'll get your contact information.
Because it's not just cut the grass.
No, 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 we got it. You know, and I want to say something on behalf of our team because something I'm proud of is that we have made a point. When we came into office, Mike and I said, you know, how are we gonna do this thing? You know, as you probably know, it's my first time. We said we're gonna have no drama. And we've gone now through four years. We're beginning our second term. We work well with the city council. Matt Wires here, he'll attest to that. We work really well with the state over there. We have an operation here internally where people don't work in silos, highly collaborative. And as Laura said, she was working with DLNR, you know, closely, not only because she used to run it, she works with them. We all work with the state. I know how frustrating that is, especially on shoreline stuff. When they come down, they go, that's the state, that's the city. Nothing ever happens. So we're never gonna make that excuse again. As far as long as we're in office, we're just solving problems and improving the quality of life. Leaf, it's that simple. So when a guy like you gets up here.
It's not that simple because it's years and making.
Well, I know it's years and making. No, I'm saying the problems. What I'm saying is, our agenda is that simple. Fix the problem, improve quality of life.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be looking forward to seeing you guys.
You got it. Thank you.
Aloha, everybody. Karen Gallagher. Okay, so easy thing. There's a river that comes out right by Rock Piles Beach, where the, you know, the existing lifeguard station is. And when they would push the sand up earlier in the year, they blocked the river. There's a pipe that comes out. It goes over underneath the road, and they blocked it. And so what that does is two things. One thing is, every time the surf gets big at all, it's, the sound is level with the road. So it goes over the, the sound goes over the road there way more than it usually does. And the other thing is, yesterday, when we had that big rain, there's a family that lives on the other side of it, and the kids was out there with shovels trying to open the thing up because their yard was all flooded. So the city needs to open that drainage system. So.
Does anybody up here want to handle that? Warren? I told you, Warren, tonight coming out here, you'd be the man.
Yeah, we can follow up with you. We have to check the jurisdiction. It might be under the State Department of Transportation. It could be DFN, or it could also be DPR, but we're just gonna check with our guys. I mean, we will follow up.
We'll follow, get your contact information. And if it happens to be the state, we'll work with them. If it's sniffing, we will work with them. If it's the Department of Transportation.
Oh, you guys, you got my number last time. You never got hold of me, so you can.
Hey, hey, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna give you my number, all right?
So you won't get hold of me too?
It's my personal cell. You don't hear from them, you call me. You can ask Rex. I'm accessible.
I'll just have Rex call you if you don't get back to me.
Rex is good at it. Go ahead.
I just want to say, Laura, when we walked the bike path and we showed you that, remember? That's exactly what she's talking about right there. Because that sand, they pile it up. When they come with the backhoe, they get it off the highway, they pile it up. And then next time a swell comes in, pushes all that sand across the highway, down into the drain, totally the drain, the run, whatever that pipe is. The people next door are the ones that are getting flooded because there's no outlet for the rainwater.
I really think, from what I've heard and what I think, I little I know, I think it's a state issue, but we'll work it out. Okay? We'll work it out.
Okay, I just want to shout out that I've been, I'm the president of the North Shore Transportation Alternatives on the North Shore. And we've been working on doing shuttle service. We've been talking about this for a while, shuttles and bike paths with the North Shore Land Trust. And a few months ago, one of our board members got a letter from the city outlining something extremely similar, your mobility hubs out here. And we're just really excited to be working with you. And I think this will be a great thing for our community. So mahalo.
Thank you. We love it. We love it. We love it. Thank you. Thank you. Come on, miss. I understand that Brenton Awah, Senator Awah, you joined us. You're in the office, in the back. Brenton, glad you're here. Does Sean Quinn show up? Any chance? Is Sean here? Okay, all right, ma'am.
Aloha. My name is Katie Metzger, and I'm a resident here and a small business owner on the North Shore. And first, I just want to mahalo you so, so much for listening to the community about saving Sharks Cove. It's massive, huge. There's so much strife in the world, and this just gives us hope that you actually listen to us. And it's such an important, precious gem on the North Shore, and it would be gone forever. So I really, it means so much. So first that. And I also want to apologize for coming late. Aina Night is at Sunset Elementary tonight. It's been planned for a really long time. And there's a lot of families, a lot of parents, a lot of young families that plan to be here. But that was planned way long ago. And so I just want to say sorry for being late. And also, more people would be here if it wasn't for that. And this is important. I am very concerned about the development proposed at Turtle Bay. DPP, we submitted 19,000 signatures saying that we need an updated SEIS. I actually work with honeybees, and I have done, I've been working with bees for 16 years. I have seen endangered yellow-faced bee up at Turtle Bay with my own eyes. It is on the endangered species list. It's the first honeybee in the whole, you know, nation that was put on the endangered species list. And it's our kuliana. We're here. We're here. We're the people now. It's up to us to protect that. And so I'm asking you, Mayor, I'm late, so maybe this was come up before, and I apologize for that.
No, nobody's brought up the bee. I know about the honeybee in Turtle Bay. I should have an update on that, on that project. I don't know if any of us do. Do you, Brian?
Yeah, all I know is they did their assessment. I think they identified the areas that it showed where the flora and fauna were.
In 2013. So it's long, long, it needs to be updated. I mean, that's, there's a lot of growth, especially with, there's, you know, new, a lot of new turtles, actually. There's a lot of, that's an expanding community out that way. And I also know for the endangered bee, that's also, but 2013, that's way too long. So I know that that's all we're asking, is for an updated, you know, SEIS.
Where did you send the 19,000 signatures? To whom? I never saw them. Yeah, where did they?
Went to DPP. It was addressed to DPP. Yep. I didn't do it. I was just one of the persons that signed it. But I know there's a lot.
So there's no truth, there's no truth that one person signed all 19,000.
There's a lot.
There's actually 19,000 different people. There you go. Okay, I get you.
Who signed that?
I'm just, it's okay, Katie. I was just playing with you. I get it. I get it. All right, look, we'll find out about it. But here's what I don't want to do. I don't want to misrepresent or misstate anything tonight. As I said before, we may give you answers you don't like, but we want to speak the truth. I also, when we don't know, I want to tell you, we don't know right now, but we'll find out more about it. I don't think, Mike, we've had any kind of update on, I haven't had any on Turtle Bay. We'll find out more about it.
I would appreciate it. Thank you. Who do I follow up with about that?
Yeah, can I get your contact info?
Brian.
Yes.
Brian's deputy director. You were here when they did the introductions. He's the deputy director of the Department of Planning and Perimeter.
Okay.
Brian is.
Great, great.
Outstanding civil engineer, good guy, smart, all that stuff. Okay, who's up? Is anybody up? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Kai Hall. I've been a lifeguard here on the North Shore for about 18 years. And I have two questions. We are very thankful that you want to put a first responders hub there. Awesome, very, very well. It's not gonna happen for many years, and we have had numerous drownings every year happen at Three Tables, Sharks Cove, and Keiki. We'd like to see some money sent to that area specifically to put lifeguards on the beaches. As a first responder, we can't do anything unless we're on the scene at that time.
What do you want?
I want, we have personnel to work overtime shifts. Okay? You have put a restraint on our, that's the second question. So first, your question is, how can we get towers put on the beaches so we can stop the people from entering the water when they don't need to?
You know, Adam wants to, you know, since we've been in office now, I believe you guys have gotten more towers since we've been in.
We on the North Shore do not have any extra towers.
We put them in different places. What?
We on the North Shore have not any extra towers.
No, but we have though. We just haven't done it here. So I.
Yeah, so thanks, Kai, for asking that question. I appreciate that. No, so we do have, we have five new towers that are coming in, and that's an area that we realize is a problem. And Kai knows that we, earlier this year, I think it was right around when the Eddie swell came. It's been a problem for many, many years, and we know it. So we started combating it. Obviously, we're not gonna throw a tower there overnight. There's a lot of things that go into throwing a tower on a specific beach. So we started putting a mobile truck there. There's basically a tower that staffed with two personnel that bounces back and forth between Three Tables and Sharks Cove. And it seems to be working. You can admit it's been working. There's a lot of things that go into throwing a tower at any given beach. There's union rules. There's, you gotta have a bathroom, you gotta have running water. But our plan as, right now, is in the very near future, when we get those five towers this summer, we want to put a tower at Sharks Cove. That's our main goal. There's some logistics that we've got to work with, but we're really, really, we have heard from workers like you in the community, and it's something that we really want to do. And I've been working with Kurt on it, and it's something we want to do. I went and met with her captain the other day, and we looked at a site, and it's not gonna be easy. We're gonna have to trim some trees maybe and find some areas to put it. But that's something we really want to do. We recognize it. There's, I mean, I can go on and on. There's beaches. I mean, people don't realize that La Ni'akea and Chuns, it wasn't that long ago that we had no towers there, and we put towers there. it wasn't that long ago that we had no towers there, and we put towers there. We used to guard it with a truck many years ago when I was working. So it's something we want to do.
You know, one of the things that I said, I don't think you watch the state of the city, is that our ocean safety team, our lifeguards, everybody has been asked to do more with less. That was a lot of the reason why we decided, as you guys have come of age, we talk about it all the time. Best watermen and women in the world, part of the most dangerous beaches in water out there anywhere, and we should have it done. I don't believe it's going to take years and years to get the first responder hub done. It will definitely be a priority. There'll have to be environmental backstories. We'll have to go through all of that. But I certainly, we only have three years and eight months left here. I want to be more than breaking ground if not, I want to see, we're going to make this a real priority for us. As far as towers, we'll try to do even more than that if we can. I said publicly in the state of the city, we're going to spend, we already planned to do it, which is why we separated Ocean Safety from EMS, millions and millions of dollars. You've not heard that before. We're on record of saying that. We've made a commitment. We've budgeted to do that. So I can appreciate the frustrations of the past. But since you're a young guy and you've been an 18-year veteran, which I have tremendous respect for, I promise you, tomorrow is going to be a hell of a lot better than yesterday was. I promise you that.
Okay, I thank you for that. The first responder hub itself is great. We do appreciate that. The problem is, you can staff 15 people inside that building, you can staff all the trucks, all the personnel. They're not going to stop the person from walking into the water at Three Tables.
Right.
Only a tower with three personnel in that tower is going to stop the person from entering the water.
I got it. I got it. You know what? That's actually simple to do compared to building a first responder hub. So let's see what we can get done on the number of towers and where they should be placed.
Thank you. And second, second question. For years and years, they've done this mathematical equation that says, in the wintertime, we need to staff all of our towers at three personnel per tower, giving one person a chance to take their break, and so forth and so on. Every year, for, since, again, you can attest to this, Adam, every summer, we scale back. We scale back in the number of people that we can have in this district to enforce the rules and to watch over the public and the visitors alike. Every year, we scale back to two people per tower. Okay, one person's on a lunch break, the other person's in charge of watching a stretch of beach from, you know, Keiki all the way to, I'm sorry, Eokai Beach Park. Okay, that's not enough personnel to watch that whole stretch of beach.
That's a management issue, and so we made a change in management. We made a change in management. We've just selected the five people who are going to be on the Ocean Safety Commission. Four of them, all of them are really pretty incredible water people. We hear you. That's a management issue. We'll certainly take it up with Kurt, but, you know, go ahead.
So, so last year, there was funding to have us work overtime to fill that void. So you approved it, or your council approved the overtime budget to fill that to three personnel. Okay, we had all those drownings, all that stuff. Our partner passed away in the summertime, okay? This year, this summer, we're now going to go back to two personnel because our budget got cut. So I just want you to know, and the public to know, that we are going to go from three personnel in each tower to two personnel this summer, because we don't have the staffing.
Okay.
And if we have, we have personnel who are willing to work and fill that spot for overtime day, we're not allowed to do that. We're told we cannot do that.
That's why we're here tonight, to hear stuff like this. We'll look into that. I hear you, right? We didn't, you know, actually, what you're saying to me is news to me. That doesn't make any sense. We go through so much effort here to, as I've said countless times already, about quality of life issues, it's saving lives, which is your front responsibility. We'll look into that.
Okay, well, as of April 1st, our association, our community of lifeguards had gotten a letter that says there'll be no more staying late, no more, we quit work at 6:30. We're not allowed to stay late unless there's a high surf warning. There's still hundreds of people on the beaches. And we are asking that we are able to stay later and the times that we need, and to work the overtime shifts when there's voids to be filled.
Okay.
Yeah, totally understand that, Kai. Like you said, it's a management issue. We can talk about it, but, I mean, it comes down to staffing, right? It's not necessarily budget-related, I want to say. It's staffing, right? We have a hard time retaining employees. We have the same amount of employees we had two years ago, so it comes down to that. And we're, yes, we need lots more. We're trying to hire. We're starting a class on Monday.
And we put it in the budget. You know, I didn't want to take issue with what you said, but we didn't cut any ocean safety budget. We actually just increased the budgets dramatically. So we just need to dig down on this in front a little bit more, but I hear you. I hear the frustration. I appreciate it.
They're building a bypass road at La Ni'akaia, correct? They're building a bypass road because of the amount of people who come to the North Shore.
Yeah.
We have two people on that beach. There's hundreds of people looking at turtles illegally parked. It's a mess down there. Two people cannot be in charge of all the ocean and be stewards of the land at the same time. It doesn't work that way. Please approve the overtime so we can have our third personnel back in that tower.
Yeah, I promise. We're looking to. We will.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kai. I appreciate what you just said. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your public service. My name is Sabra. I'm a community member...
What's your name?
Sabra.
Sabra.
I'm a community member in Waialua. I volunteer to teach water exercise on Wednesdays at the Waialua Pool. And we cannot get lifeguards to staff it. So on a much smaller scale than the lifeguards watching the beach, which is huge, and we thank them, we can't get lifeguards to staff the pool. We can't open the pool consistently. Our elderly Kabuna community uses that pool regularly. We teach kids to swim so they can swim safely in the ocean. We can't get it open.
So, thank you. We know how important pools are, lap swimming, keiki swim lessons, adult, you know, senior aerobics. We have been having trouble getting the position filled for the pool. But we did go through recruitment and made a selection on April 2nd. The person has to go through the background check, and hopefully, they will accept it. It is kind of a buyer's market for employees right now, and so, you know, our fingers crossed, but that would be the pool manager position. We also have authority to hire a contract pool person to be a lifeguard there. Lifeguards, we can hire people as young as 16 years old. We will train them so that they can pass their certification, and the pay can start at $19 an hour, which is a good job for a youth. We can hire the contract people. If you've got somebody that's still in school, that wants to work part-time, we can do that. And so we are, you know, e komo mai. I'm hoping that selection on the pool manager takes the job, and that that will help open up more hours and for more programs. But we are trying our best across the island to hire more lifeguards. So please, if you know people, encourage them to apply, and come see me, and I can give people cards as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sabra.
Aloha, Mayor.
Aloha.
Thank you. My name is Henny Wasson. Aloha, Chief Logan, Assistant Chief at Major Town. Good to see you guys. I'm here. In 1893, 123 years ago, our monarchy was overthrown. And that was the beginning of the end for my... for my people. And here we are now, 2025, asking, begging to stay here in our homeland. And we are not being allowed. We are leaving in droves. Vegas, Texas, Arizona, any place. The number one thing that's kicking us out and exiling us from our own homeland at the cost of living here in Hawaii. And all we ask is the land that we do have, that we own, that we could govern. 4,000 square feet of my three-bedroom, two-bath home goes for $860,000. It dropped from 160,000, $180,000. Mortgage payment is $3,000, $4,000. And we found something that we thought could help our family to stay here.
Thank you. Is there a question?
The question is...
I want to be very respectful on this topic.
Thank you. I had a whole spiel.
I know, but...
My wife told me, no, it's just questions.
I remember you from last year.
Yes, sir.
And if I were to tell you, and Kevin O'Jain is here from our housing department, the work we're doing is unprecedented in the city of creating housing, which is, a lot of cases, one of the biggest drivers of high-class living. There are other factors as well. We talk all the time about outmigration and about people, I don't even know when I learned that word. I don't even learn that word when I got into office. But I've watched, and we know what the numbers are, and we don't disagree with what you're saying. We can't build housing fast enough. It's, and we're trying to do that. We are doing it. I've done two blessings this week alone. Two. Yesterday for 600 homes and Monica Atalas, our money, both with Governor Green on housing we're creating. We're trying to do as much as we can, as fast as we can. If you're talking about single-family housing out here in the North Shore, that's a different deal.
It's not the housing. It's those that are already, that have a house
Yep.
that want to have short-term rentals.
That's different.
Yes. Yes, sir.
So you want to talk about short-term vacation rentals?
Yes, sir.
All right, so let me tell you right now. We don't have problems with the bed and breakfast model, okay? We probably have to get the law changed. What I have problems with, to give you a perspective, is that on this island, there are about 25,000 illegal, according to zoning laws, short-term vacation rentals. What that equates to, on any given night, between 11,000 and 12,000 room nights available for rent. In 2019, before COVID, the state entertained 10 million, almost 700,000 visitors. And if COVID had not happened in 2020, we would have broke 11 million for the first time. Now, the hotel operators will tell you statewide, at a high level of occupancy, 95%, 12 months a year, which doesn't happen. But if that were to happen, the most we could handle is 8,000. Okay? Eight million, rather. 3 million people in 2019 stayed in illegal, short-term vacation rentals.
Respect, King Bear.
Now, wait a minute. Hear me, because I listened to you.
Okay.
Here's the dynamic at play. It's not about you, your family wanting to rent a back bedroom. Here are the numbers on this. That is the equivalent of 28 400-room hotels. A 400-room hotel would be the Kahala Hotel. 28 400-room hotels. 50% of those are owned by people who don't live in Hawaii. 27% of those own 20 or more.
Yes.
That is bad business.
Correct.
And that is what we're trying to clean up.
Yes, I agree. I agree. So we're saying that those that own the home, be on property in order to govern...
I think we need to amend the law that way.
Yes, sir.
We talked about it. So your point's well taken.
Yes.
Okay?
Because I want us to decide, I mean, we all want to stay here. We love it here. But the climate, this constant living climate, is making it so difficult. We, is Donna Puna here?
Who?
Donna Puna, DPP director?
No, her deputy's here tonight.
Okay. So it feels like, it is, Mayor, that we're being punished as lifetime residents by DPP.
I promise you, we're not trying to do that. And look, we've made great strides with DPP in four years. And I would tell you, we're on record, and I said it before, we're not just interested in expediting permitting. We want to be the fastest anywhere. We've come a long way. Hang in there. We're not punishing anybody. We don't operate with that ridiculous...
We're trying. We're trying to hang in there. Oh, my gosh.
Well, hang on there, because it's already a lot better. So you tell me how it's not better for you already. What's your problem?
They're paying a $30,000 fine for advertising, and we even text the AI back, we cannot rent less than 30 days, and we still got fined. $30,000, Mayor.
Yeah.
That will take me a year and a half net pay to pay off. I don't have $30,000. And we just want to be here as Hawaii residents, govern my garage. Sorry. My garage. Kick out the cars and try and rent it out, and be here. And we're bringing people in.
What's your first name?
Henny.
Kenny.
Henny.
Henny.
Yes, sir.
We get it. We don't have to belabor it. We understand that dynamic. When we passed the legislation we did, and the attempt we had was precisely aimed at these absentee owners who were not paying taxes, who were invading neighborhoods, because they weren't just out here on this side of the island, everywhere. Taking what was long-term rentals off the market for short-term gain, ruining neighborhoods, driving up prices. It was only totally out of control. We thought we were doing the right thing. And we're open-minded, and we said this earlier, to try to adjust to make it feasible. What you're talking about represents, Henny, a very small minority of the people.
There's thousands of us, sir. We can get a list, and we can bring, it's tens of thousands of us.
Well, we need to, I don't think there's tens of thousands.
There's a lot.
I can tell you again, 50% are owned by people off-island. 27% own 20 or more.
Then punish those people, not those that stay here.
That's what we're looking to do. That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to balance out. We're trying to balance that out.
We're getting caught up...
I would tell you, there are zoning laws too, to get in the way, to saying, well, we're going to forgive every bed and breakfast. There are, there are, there are other rules that transcend this, okay? So it's become its own industry when it really shouldn't be.
And people are going to come here because it's cheaper.
Yeah.
And spend and contribute.
It's a very complicated thing. There are laws in place that still make that illegal. We're trying to figure out how we can best solve that.
Please uncomplicate it for us.
Well, we're trying.
Thank you.
I appreciate your patience. Thank you. Leaf, ordinarily, I'd say get one swing at the back, but you are so entertaining. I'm so excited you're going to fix this lady's problem. Go ahead.
I think we can fix it.
Yep.
What we need to do is, you guys are all good at making rules and stuff like that. We'll make rules so that you have to live here, rent a house, do whatever you live on the street, whatever, before you can buy anything. That will slow down the influx of all these rich people buying ag land that we cannot plant anything on. They're not planting nothing except houses.
I wasn't aware anybody was selling ag land, but no speeches. We get the problem.
No, I'll get to the point. We need ag land, and these people that are buying ag land are not staying here. And the people that are staying here can't afford it.
Got it. We understand that.
So all the money is going out, and we don't get nothing. We don't get our agriculture. We don't get our houses. Pretty soon, all of us going to be on the street because of land taxes and stuff keep going up. I know you're not going to raise them this year.
So we're not going to raise them during our time. Okay, I hear your problem. It's a very complicated problem. I promise you, we've made great strides there.
It's complicated for you guys, and us guys is like, do something, do something.
Since you said this, Leaf, well, I know we are, we can make policy. We spent a lot of our time trying to figure out, how do we get rid of the ridiculous rules that are getting in the way of being practical and sound?
Are you talking about the rule that if your, if your horse takes a crap on the street, that you can be arrested? It's still on the books, right?
Okay, thank you. Ma'am.
My name is Debbie Aldrich. I live in Kauai Loa, which is essentially Haleiwa to Waimea. I can get right to my question, which is, to whom do I speak to get two speed humps and one raised crosswalk put in so the people in my neighborhood don't get wiped out?
Roger.
I guess you can speak to me.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's...
And we'll get your name, and we have a lot of requests throughout the island. Let me tell you the process we go through first. We do an assessment of, you know, of whether a speed hump is the appropriate remedy. First, we see if there's a problem. Then we want to make sure that, you know, that people understand there's a lot of speed humps around. They're not always the best treatment. They, if they're in front of your house, they, sometimes they can make noise and other things. If they're on a hill or on a turn, they're really not appropriate. But I'll get your information.
Somebody came out, Kathy and Pahinu, we talked to somebody, somebody came out and they said, there is a crosswalk, and they went back to town. I'm not going to go away, because it's the Indy 500 in the morning, coming from Waimea heading toward town.
Which, which road are you talking about?
Kamua-Mea Highway.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Kamua-Mea, as you know, it's a state highway.
The trucks...
Unfortunately, that's, that would be Ed Sniffin for Kamua-Mea. Kamua-Mea outside of Haleiwa Town or in the town?
Yes, outside. It's between...
Yeah, that's a state highway.
So, yeah, where do I go?
You would go to the State Department of Transportation.
Can I get a name?
Ed Sniffin.
Who? Oh, Ed Sniffin.
He loves...
Yeah, not that other Tatsuguchi guy. That guy doesn't do it. Okay.
Ed has a T-shirt. It says, Ed would hump anything.
Okay, thank you.
His phone number is very easy to get. His phone number is very easy to get if you just go online. You can get, okay. No, but that's different. You know, it's really interesting.
This time I want to be there when they come out.
Yeah.
I'd like them to come out at 7:00 AM.
You call them and ask them, see if they can set that up.
Yeah.
We'll even put a friendly call into them and tell them what we heard.
Okay.
Okay? But I can tell you this. Last year, we were in Kahuku, and to my surprise, we got, we had to tell the people, we've already handled the subject. Numerous people complaining about all the speed bumps.
That's, that's kind of too many up there.
Yeah, and so that was like the other side of it, you know, and so we took that up with them as well. But I hear what you're saying about too many, but that's how the residents feel.
The main thing too is, young people are moving into the, mahalo.
Get ahold of Roger. He's your key to Ed.
They're pushing their strollers down town.
Yes, I get it. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Roger... All right. Roger will get you to Ed. One degree of separation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cora Sanchez, and I came a couple years ago to the town hall regarding Haleiwa Beach Park Malka. We had an adopt-a-park that had been paused because it was unimproved lands, even though we had been caretaking it for 10 years.
I remember that, yeah.
And you guys got my number. You guys got back on it. We have our adopt-a-park agreement back in place. I just wanna thank you for that. It was amazing because we do have people here that care for that land.
Yep.
And we could use more. My have a question is, in the overall plan, about how the planning for the Canoe Halau is going.
The Canoe Halau. Laura, you know about that? Brian knows about that. This is good. You want my microphone?
Apologies, yeah. So the Department of Design and Construction, they're saying they have a consultant on board. They've already had a kickoff meeting this past January, and they're coordinating with a surveyor right now and parks on that exact project. So they're moving forward. They have the funding, and I don't, they don't have a timeline on when it'll be completed, but it's moving forward. They're definitely working on it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and actually, our director from Design and Construction was gonna come in, and I saw him this morning. He says, I'll be there tonight. While we were driving out here, he called and his son got sick and he had to take care of him. So he's not here. But now I remember, we told, his name is Haku, Haku Millis, that that was gonna come up after listening about that. So it is, it's on the top of the list here.
That's good. Okay. And thank you, because we've had some amazing projects.
We know how wide of paddling is. You know, I said earlier tonight, all the districts are different, but there are some common denominators. The common denominators have so much to do with how people, you know, do recreational things. From dog parks to paddling to, you know, how people play is a big part of life. Parks and Recreation, Laura has all these parks. So we're very aware of these things. We're really trying to make them a priority because we realize little things like what we did and helping on the adopt-a-park before makes such a big difference. Honestly, this team loves doing stuff like that.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you coming out.
You're welcome. Bob, you coming back up?
Yeah.
Well, this young lady.
Sorry. You gonna dance for us tonight?
So my name is Melissa Meek, and I guess you guys, the city and county, are the ones that are responsible for the bike path by the Waialua Library. That's not, so you guys did that whole bike path and realignment of the road. Well, I'm a biker, so I love it. It's great, and I thank you. That was beautiful, continuing the bike path, you know, by the library. But what's really interesting is how many times cars, when they're coming down Goodell Avenue, drive down the bike path because they have those poles there and it's just, but anyway, thank you. I use it every day. I ride my bike because I'm not one of those people that complains about traffic.
Yeah. So what is the question, though? What is the question?
My question was, and I asked whether the city and county-
Okay.
-or the state was in charge of that road, Goodell Avenue, and it's you guys. Thank you. So I wanted to make sure that.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Roger. You were, yeah, let's.
So we're still making a few adjustments on that bike path, on the intersection particularly, right by, yeah. So we are still making a few adjustments. It's almost done. And I, you know, we're gonna make some adjustments.
So Rex, are you happy about bike paths? Have we done what you wanted us to do with the bike path? The last time I got a stack of letters from your kids.
Okay, the bike path that she's talking about is the one that runs through Waialua-
Yeah.
-along that road. Our bike passes Sunset Beach.
We still haven't done that yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
You're working on it.
Yeah, we are. And you're here, and I wanna know that because-
Thank you, sir.
Before we get done, we'll take care of it.
You'll keep hearing from me.
I know, Rex. I actually like, I'm actually looking forward to going home and reading these letters. All right, Bob, we got five minutes left, sir.
Okay, so a lot of the people that live in the Pupukea area will end up going to Kahuku High School. And one of your favorite things to talk about is that swimming pool that's gonna go into Kahuku.
Yes.
And I'm curious what the timeline is on that, because a lot of the people out here will benefit from that asset.
Yeah, Laura's been working on it. We got a lot going on with that swimming pool. Go ahead.
So we are continuing to work with AES. The agreement is that they are gonna be doing the design for a swimming pool, but also for an additional recreation area in that park. We've had two community meetings. They were great meetings. They were facilitated by the AES planner in our department. And the community looked at options on where to locate the pool and the size of the pool. They opted for a 50-meter pool and located by the front of the highway with some parking there. And then, instead of a small rec center, what they came up with is to have covered outdoor courts. So to take the outdoor courts that are there now and make them into three full-size basketball courts and have a cover over it. If you Google Pahoa on the Big Island, you can see an example of an outdoor court facility. It'll have a roof. It has electrical, and the walls come down to about eight feet off the ground. And one of the benefits of it is, it is open for use, so you don't have to have the gym attendant to unlock the building, because sometimes we're not able to unlock buildings at night if we're short on staff. But this would provide year-round, nighttime, you know, all-weather basketball play for the youth leagues that they have there. So we're proceeding on the design. The city is helping with some of the technical studies to reduce the cost, and it's a wonderful partnership. So.
Anybody have the last question of the evening? Is anyone? On anything? Look, on behalf of my team, then I wanted to say mahalo to all of you for being caring enough and loving your community to come to an event like tonight. I really appreciate the questions, the sincerity, the civility. You know, we say it all the time, and I said it tonight, this job, for me and for everybody up here, is about trying to solve problems. And we don't point fingers. We don't blame anybody. We don't make excuses. And I know that asking people to be patient probably can sound frustrating, but I promise you, we're working at everything as fast and as hard as we can. We're doing so many unprecedented things, and I'm very proud of them. And we're just committed to serving our communities. Otherwise, we would not be here tonight. Okay? Or we'd be going to the other places. So hang in there with us. We're all very proud that we got re-elected during the primary. I told our team, I ran, but we won. It really was a team win. It's an incredible group of people. It's a high-quality group of people. So just take stock in that tonight. As you leave, know that we're committed to making things better. God bless you all. Thanks for being here tonight.